We're probably gonna go in for the handbook. Is the board--
The handbook would be discussed in public.
Oh, okay, okay.
What about the B and L proposal?
You wanna discuss the B and L proposal? Well, no, we'll do, we'll let Barton and the Jews, they're here today and they'll do a presentation. Okay.
Those are your amendments.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, can I have a motion? Okay, to accept the agenda? Second, okay, roll call Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
Reverend Matthews.
Yes.
Rochelle.
Yes.
Approval minutes from the October ninth, October fifteenth, November sixth, two thousand thirteen, Village Board meeting, count a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
Reverend Matthews.
Yes.
And Rochelle. The propose, proposal-- Okay, yep, excuse me.
I just need a motion to move that to the December third meeting.
Okay, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, roll call Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
Reverend Matthews.
Yes.
Rochelle.
Yes.
Presentation of proposing zoning change by the building inspector, James Snowden.
Yes.
Thank you, James.
We've been working with the legislators on rezoning the village and coming up with a comprehensive plan for the village. The map before you and back of you, excuse me, is the old map. Alan Scorsing, the legislator, created a new map for us. And it looks pretty much like this. One of our new zoning.
Yeah.
This is gonna be the new zoning in the village. We still have some work to do on the zoning, but we did a walkthrough with the legislators and we went through each block and it was me, Gordon, trustee Larissa, and we discussed changes that we're gonna make to our zoning, such as we only gonna allow two families. We're gonna try to get away from the three family structures. Also, we working with the county planner and he is going to design our Broadway scene. And that's pretty much it. But this is gonna be the new village. It's gonna be something to be proud of. And when we finish with it, it's gonna be a public hearing and everybody gonna be able to make a comment on it.
So, but the three apartments, can you explain it? So, the ones that are already three apartments.
Oh.
Legally done, you know?
Right.
But the ones, you talking about the ones that people has converted to four apartments and the residential area?
Yes.
That's also one is for the most change.
Yes. The three families that's in existing today, that's legally in existing, will remain. The ones that's not legally will be closed down. They have an option to either turn it back to a two-family or apply for a variance in the zoning board. Anything that's in existing legally today will stay in effect. If it's illegal, then they have some problems.
Do they say the grandfathers, that they already existed there, that they have two apartments, those will not change it, that's gonna stay?
Exactly, trustee.
Okay? Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, James. Okay, Barton and the Jews, Glenn and Anthony, you wanna come up and give us a presentation on the wastewater treatment plant?
Hi. Good evening, everybody.
How you doing?
Good.
As the board knows, we've been working with the village since two thousand eight, two thousand nine on the sewer treatment plant and we helped and assisted the village in obtaining the fifteen million dollar funding package from USDA, which comprised of very low interest loan and a grant package for the full fifteen million. On October fifteenth, the village received bids for the, I'll call it the third phase, the first phase being the no-sore drive improvements, the second phase being letting out for bid the sledge pumps at the treatment plant, and then this third phase being the treatment plant. And there's a future phase four, which would be any reconstruction of the collection system to address INI, to replace some pumps and some piping and add some generators in throughout the collection system. Based on the bids received October fifteenth, the estimated cost of the project is twenty-one and a half million dollars. We have worked with the village and bond counsel, legal counsel, and fiscal advisor, as well as USDA and EFC over the course of the last three weeks, and we've come up with a very affordable financing package for the twenty-one and a half million dollars. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we told the village that the cost of the project to the typical household a year was five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Based on a lot of the meetings and discussions that we've had to date, we are now looking at a five hundred and seventy dollar a year per household project at a twenty-one and a half million dollar project. So, the project, although has increased in size by six and a half million dollars for all the needs the village has, the cost as to a typical household has only increased eight dollars a year. So, that's sixty-seven cents a month. So, that's basically what a typical household in the village would need to pay for the increased cost and the project as a whole.
So, do we have any answer from the other day, three and a half hours?
What Carmen, what trustee Rue is referring to is we had a meeting with EFC the other day where they came down and talked to the village about the affordability of the project and what the village sees as a way to pay back this money. Basically, their answer is gonna be contingent upon the board making the decision to proceed forward with the twenty-one and a half million dollar project, the village presenting them with the two thousand twelve audit, the two thousand thirteen audit, and the annual financial update reports, as well as some other supplemental information, such as all the development that's clustered up around the room that's going on here in the village, as well as some of the initial articles and public support behind the initial project back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
The audit is already in process, the two thousand thirteen, so today we have again an agenda for to do, they almost finished two thousand twelve, so it's gonna be ready now. This twenty-one and a half, this also included in the water, no? Some of the water, or yes, only the sewer?
This is only--
We was talking about the water, but then, you know, that ain't--
Trustee Rue, this is twenty-one and a half million dollars for the sewer.
Yes, only the sewer.
Right.
Nothing included there.
There's nothing in the wa, included in that for the water upgrades, which are a separate project the board asked us to seek out financing for, and village hall improvements, which are currently being contemplated between the board and the village and another consultant.
That they don't wanna talk about the water project. They only concentrate on a sewer project.
Well, the meeting ran very long yesterday, so we're gonna have a conference call to talk about the water.
Part of--
Did you get the information, did you get that information showing the public the savings of this project about the, at the meeting that we were talking about? What's happened is we have outdated equipment for the sewer project and we're spending thousands of dollars that's literally going out the window because of, there's no insulation down there, I mean, the roof has holes in it, so that's all out the windows. We're paying about a hundred and sixty thousand miles a year for sludge that the village has, we have to send out because our sewer can't, our own sewer packet here can't hold the sludge. So, with this project going forward, that hundred and sixty would be part of the savings a year. And the next, I think you said, ten years, we wouldn't have to worry about sludge. So, that one sixty at ten times is a tremendous amount of savings, plus the electric and what's being spent down there is tremendously high. I can sign the bills, everything's breaking there, it's just like, and this project is not a, it's a, you know, it's not a, this is not a Band-Aid project. I mean, it's expensive, but, and it's not a Cadillac project. It's a good project and we really need it. I mean, it's, it's literally falling apart as we speak with this village. It's so old and no one is taking a step to go forward, to do something. And you can't leave it to the next mayor and the next mayor. Eventually, it falls on top of you. For an example, this building here is ancient, it's, you walk around, it's literally falling down on us. So, as the mayor and the board, we have to make some radical changes to try to get this done because we can't sit here and let it fall and we can't let, wait until the next mayor comes in and shift it on him. That's, that's not good for anyone. So, this project is very important. It sounds expensive, but I think we have to go doing something.
Yes, we should explain it to the people that we already had a fifteen million.
Yeah.
What happened is that we did that two thousand eight and now we getting another six and a half million because the project, it costs more money than we expected, the proposals. Now, that six and a half million is a zero percent interest?
That's what the current five seventy--
They don't answer yet.
Right, they haven't answered it yet. There was a huge confirmation yesterday.
Yeah.
But they haven't officially answered that question. But all indications are the current annual charges to the users is higher than what otherwise would be eligible as a hardship, which qualifies for zero percent interest. So, all indications are with the economics in the project and the cost to the users and the economics in the village, that the village is eligible for the determination. They would just need to make it a declaration.
You know, it would be good to explain it to the public about why we doing this, because the drain is problem, the sewer problem, and when it rain, so it would be good that people knows that why we are using and why we are lending this money.
Sure, sure. If I could, if I could just make a point, Mayor--
Yeah, sure, sure.
I also wanted the public to know, and trustee Rue will address your question, but one of the other issues with water and sewer has to do with economic development and it has to do with being ready as a village to be able to have capacity available when new businesses come in, which could affect the village in a positive way in terms of the recent casino vote. I want the, also the public and the board to know, we're working with Mr. Snowden's office in terms of developing a list of all of the projects that are in front of the planning board now that are increased development in the village that will also be hooking into the sewer system. So, it's actually possible that the numbers Anthony gave you a year from now may even be less because there may be more users to spread the cost out. So, I know it sounds sort of counterintuitive that you're gonna borrow more money and it's only gonna cost you eight more dollars a year, but the state and the federal agencies we're dealing with are hearing about what's, about Monticello in terms of your needs for infrastructure and, you know, you can't get much less than zero in terms of an interest rate. So, one of the issues that'll be, that's before the board tonight is that the board passed a bond resolution about a year ago for the fifteen million dollar project and we have to show the state that the board is willing to consider the twenty-one million because it's a bonding resolution and it has to have a super majority. So, there has to be four people voting in favor of that to pass. That's correct, Anthony?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to say too, that the, there's a grant, that grant, there's grant money that was awarded to the village with the USDA and that grant is six, six million dollars. And that was, that grant was awarded during this board's term. So, that's, and that's probably one of the biggest grants that was awarded in New York State, matter of fact. So, I think this board did a well-done job to get that amount of money for a grant. So, you know, I'd like, I wanna know and let the public be aware that, you know, we don't sit here just playing with our fingers. There's a lot of things that we do here that probably no one even knows what we do and we spend tremendous hours trying to do things here.
Right.
So, that grant is something that, I don't think it was publicized, I don't think anyone really press or anyone, I don't know if they even cared two cents about it, but just, I'd like to just reiterate about, to the press that there was a grant at six million dollars.
Yeah, what happened is that when the grants come, we publicize because congressman gives a, a hunch I came--
Yeah.
To announce it, but those grants is not just the next day.
Right.
It's a big process, it's few years, it take a long time.
We wanna know that the board, that these people out here know that we have a grant for six million, 'cause I'm quite sure a lot didn't know.
Well, one point on that, Mayor, is that the good news is that there's six million dollars. The other part of it is that it's part of the president's original stimulus program that President Obama got passed through Congress in his first term. And the good news is that the money's available for the village and it's here and it's set aside for you. The other side of it is it has to be spent by September of two thousand fifteen. So, the board has to keep that in mind, that there is a clock ticking with that and that was part of the president's promise that, you know, they'll put up the money, but they wanna see it spent on infrastructure.
You know, in the beginning, when you came with the six, I just had to say honest, I was not sure and I was kinda the, I don't wanna bomb that much money in the village. But after yesterday, for three and a half hour, here Albany and here Phil and here, you know, was really the problem in the water and the sewer and all the contracts that we doing now, we, new hotels coming and they wanna next to the village, the sewer, the water, so all those thing we need really to improve it in order for us to, you know, to give it and get and make it more cheaper for the residents in the village because those people pay a double fee. They don't pay just our fee, they pay two times fee that we pay regular in the village, so.
So, the issue, the issue really before the board is kind of a simple issue and that's what this page is that Anthony did for you. There's obviously a lot of details and a lot of hoops that we have to jump through, but the issue is that the, the rate'll go up a very, very modest amount, but we'll be able to produce for the wastewater treatment plant, a modern, energy-efficient plant that meets all of the guidelines of the Department of Environmental Conservation and the Delaware River Basin Commission, and you'll be in a position to serve new development that comes into the village. So, that's really what's before you and, you know, later on in the, you'll, later on on the agenda, there's the bond issue, which we could speak to if you wish, but this is the, this is the bottom line, I guess.
Right, the bottom line is it's eight, for the six and a half million dollars extra for the costs, based on the bids we receive, it's an eight dollar increase a year. So, we're just asking that the board consider and hopefully pass, we'd like it, five, five votes, the bond resolution for the sewer. And just, you know, we could talk about it a little more later, but just because you authorized twenty-one and a half million dollars doesn't mean you have to spend twenty-one and a half million dollars. And one of the things that we talked about yesterday and we're gonna be cognizant of going forward is looking for additional funding sources and trying to minimize costs as we proceed forward as best we can through some value engineering.
So, this bond already, the lawyer already appealed this, or this resolution?
The bond counsel.
The bond counsel.
The bond counsel, it's already looking by the lawyer.
It's looked at by the bond counsel and it's prepared by bond counsel. We can't really comment on-- Right, and if you need bond counsel, he's told us that he's available by phone. I can get him on the phone.
Okay, so you don't need any action on the, on the bond counsel tonight, then?
We'd ask that the board pass it tonight. The, the bond, the bond resolution has a thirty-day public notice period. After the thirty-day public notice period, there's a stable period of twenty days. So, that basically, passing it tonight starts the clock. If you wait, you're only delaying the start of the clock, which is gonna delay everything and then potentially put September two thousand fifteen at risk.
Well, there's also, Mayor, if I could say, excuse me.
Yep.
There's also one other issue, the meeting that, that both of you are at, we need to show the people that have this money that the village is behind this. And basically, we've been, we've been hanging on, hanging on to this thing and, you know, basically what they're saying is they want the information that we're, that we're developing with James, they want us to send them some of the newspaper articles that you referred to earlier, and they wanna see that the village is, is committed. And if you're committed, I think we can get them, we can pull a fish into the boat.
So, this is not saying that we're approving this project, but it's just saying that we're approving the start, that we're serious about bond counsel. And so, it's no--
This says that you're serious about considering--
Considering.
The twenty-one and a half million dollars.
So, if you don't get--
Anyone's comfortable with that? The board?
I just wanna ask you, what happen if we don't get, lend it, those six and a half million for any reason? So, this is we not--
If, if we don't get it, then we could scale back to the initial fifteen or we could go seek financing somewhere else.
But we still has to pay for these--
No. You don't, you don't pay for anything that you don't need.
Because I got fifteen thousand dollars, so I wanna make sure.
Right, you don't pay for anything that you don't need.
Okay.
So, if we go out and it comes in at fifteen at the end because you couldn't get the additional six and a half, then you would only have to pay for the fifteen. All that does is authorize up to that amount. It doesn't mean that you have to spend up to that amount.
Anthony, could you explain to them the time schedule we have on this project with the eighteen months and the wait here and all this, so they can know?
If, if the board approves, if the board adopts a bond resolution this evening, it'll start a thirty-day clock and a twenty-day clock after that for the, for the bond, tied to the bond and the stable period for the public notice. The public will have a chance to comment on it after that and hopefully after that passes successfully, that time, the village would then be in a position to seek out, you know, the additional financing. We've asked the contractors that bid in the middle of October to hold their prices. Some of them have confirmed that they're willing to hold their prices and we're still waiting back to hear from the others. But right now, those bids expire on November twenty-ninth. If they hold their price, that extension will take us through this public notice period into a point where we can execute contracts. So, we hope that after the fifty days, which would take us into January, we would be able to execute contracts, January, February, in that timeframe, and then start construction. Construction's eighteen months from then, so if you do the math from February, you're looking at the next February and then you're looking at August. So, really, when you add in the eighteen-month construction period, we're looking at potentially finishing right up against the deadline. And so, if, if the village, you know, is unsuccessful in its pursuit for the additional six and a half million, then we would have to re-scope, possibly do a smaller project and then possibly that would put the full six and a half million dollar grant at risk.
And I would like to also, if anybody know construction, we're figuring eighteen months to do the project, we can run until nineteen months, we can run, so we have to make a decision.
What's, how about with the EFC hardship? Is there, are they considering that?
Yes, that would be the zero percent.
That's the zero percent.
How about George Pop with the USDA? Is he considering giving us any more money?
He's considering, he's considering leaving the six million grant on the table.
Well, you can only ask.
USDA has more money.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
USDA has more money, but, but EFC's money comes at zero percent. USDA's money comes at a percent interest. So, EFC is the best path forward.
Just to lend it, not to--
Right, you can't, you can't turn away free, free interest. Especially, I mean, this eight dollars also takes into consideration that a USDA term loan of thirty-eight years and an EFC term loan of thirty years. That eight dollars also takes that into consideration.
So, if you get the six and a half million, you don't gonna recoup again the bidders? You're just gonna go with the ones they already have, we have there?
Yes.
So, if we go to the only fifteen millions and you gonna do it again because it's over?
Correct.
So, can I make, so can I make a motion for the bond, to the board, bond counsel with Hawkins and Delphine?
Number twenty-one.
Oh, is that in there?
Yeah.
Oh, it's in twenty-one?
That's the amended resolution.
Oh, okay, all right. I figure we could just do it now.
You can make it now.
You can do it now since we're on it, okay?
Wait, it's the number twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah.
You make the motion.
Okay.
To go forward.
Okay, and is there a second?
A second, yes.
Okay, roll call Carmen.
Yes.
Larissa.
Yes.
Reverend Matthews.
Yes.
Rochelle.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you guys.
And your vote, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it's--
Certainly got five.
It's gonna help us a lot with these people, that this was unanimous and it was very good.
That's what they wanna see, so hold on.
Thank you for answering all these.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on number nine. This is mayor manager report. You know, just like I said, and I'll just reiterate a little bit with the, with the sewer treatment plant, everything probably, I mean, everything in this village is probably falling apart as we speak. Past managers, mayors, whatever you wanna call it, has done nothing. This building is falling on top of us, everything is collapsing. We have a furnace, we have two furnaces in the village that are probably twenty-five years old and they're kaputts. So, I'm not, I can handle anything that's on my shoulders, but I would like the people out there to see that with the, what's been happening here, has, no one has been doing any maintenance at all in this village. So, it falls on the shoulders of us and we're not gonna pass the buck. We're gonna do what we have to do to get and clean this village up. So, I'd like to just say something about what we're doing in the village. A lot of people don't, they don't seem to know what's going on and what's happening. Sometimes the press can give you all kind of nonsense like this board does not know what they're doing or not what, they don't have any idea about anything. We have a project, Dunbar Towers is a project, it's probably the biggest project that's going in this village. It's a, it's a big project. We've been getting permits on that building for about twenty-five thousand, just for permits. That building is eighty percent completed. It's gonna bring jobs. And all these projects that I'm gonna mention, they, the, the owners of these projects have, the deal what I've made with these guys is that we need work and jobs in this village and that's my deal to anyone that comes here. So, someone can throw a million dollars or ten million dollars at the mayor and, you know, something, there's no deal, but you can give me ten jobs and we have a deal. Dunbar Towers is one that's almost completed, they need people to work there. We have, Pastone is buying on West Broadway, that's the old, what's that? As we speak, they're gonna put six million dollars into that. It's low-income housing. They guaranteed us jobs in this village. We have another, we have a hotel down, that's already, all of these projects already been through planning and already completed. It's, a lot of these projects have been years that we've been talking about. Now, they're developing and I would like to congratulate everyone that voted on the casinos, 'cause we definitely need it. And most of the projects, a lot of the projects, people have literally told me if casinos weren't going forward, they would bail out of this village. All of the stakes are on the table that everyone's moving forward. We have a hotel, a hundred-room hotel, Henry Zabada's gonna build it, that's another revenue, that's another jobs for people in this village, that's guaranteed. That's my, that's what I get, I need the guaranteed jobs in this village for people out here that's not working. That's another project. We have, Waverly Avenue, we have two big complex, we have eighty-two single-family houses that are going up. They're not, they, they are on a tax roll, single lots, all taxable. There's nothing in this village that I or this board has let, letting go forward without paying taxes. So, we have them on single lots. That's another big source of revenue to the village. Then, on Spark Drive on the hill, there's a hundred and twenty units that someone wants to build there.
Senior.
Senior housing. On Jeffersonville, someone bought the lot on Jeffersonville on the hill, he wants to do another hundred and twenty units on Jeffersonville. Jefferson Street, Jefferson Street, excuse me. Um, there's so many projects, multiple proj, as a matter of fact, the old hospital, someone's looking to buy that. All of these projects have been, I mean, there's multiple projects that we've been sitting here for years and years trying and waiting and developing until they, when they take off, and they are taking off. So you will see growth in this village, and I'm not sitting here saying that because I'm not running for reelection. I always have said to the pe- people here that I would get jobs in this village for people, and if there was construction or anything going on forward, we would be a part of it, and that's what's happening since the casinos are coming here. We are not gonna be left out in this village without jobs in this village, and I, and I would put my life on that to, what's that, what I say is what I'm gonna do, because we deserve that. This is our village and we need work, we definitely need work here. This village is the third poorest village in the state of New York. The, uh, the average income, I think it's about twenty thousand dollars. So we're dealing with a lot of levels of poorness in this community, and we need people to work here. There's, James, did I touch on most of them?
We have the six million dollar library.
We have the six, that's another one. All of these projects are done and planning, there's no more talking, it's done. So now they're, they're starting to build, right on Broadway, a six million dollar project that's going there. So that's gonna just be a nice anchor for Broadway. That, that library, it's all happening as we speak. There's many more that we, I could sit here and go, but I, I know it's a, I wanna make a shorter meeting, I, but you can always come, like I said, to my office and I'll discuss to anyone what we, what's happening in the village.
Are we gonna finish the youth center?
The youth center, yes. You know, I, I can't comment, commenting on that, but you know something? I would lo, I would love for people that believe, uh, whatever they wanna say, come and talk to the mayor about what that, what happened there, and I'll tell you the real truth. The real truth, I don't sit here and lie and, and sell, uh, tickets to people, so. But, um, what we're gonna do, and you know, and I please, I appreciate the large turnout of people coming to this vill, village meeting. This is your village, and people should get more involved in what's going on in this village and know what's going on. It's only better for all of us here. The support, I appreciate it. The board, I'm quite sure appreciates people coming and supporting this board, cause we're doing this for you. And the bottom line, you know, we're, we are public service, number one, and we work for you. And that's why I have an open door policy. If anyone in this village, and they know that if there's any problems in this village, they can come. You don't have to, you don't have to call, you don't have to, you can come knock on the door and you can come right on in. This is your village and I work for you. And, but I can keep going, cause I like to talk, so I'm gonna, and, alright, so, um, we'll go to number ten. Approval of bills in amount of four hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents, can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorized in December third, two thousand thirteen, village board meeting, time seven thirty PM, for allowance of the joint meeting with the town of Thompson at six forty-five.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
That's a joint meeting, there's a gym that we're, a gym down here, they wanna annex into the village of Monticello, they're building a new gym. That's another one I didn't say.
On Monticello. Monticello Fitness.
Yeah, Mon, uh, Monticello Fitness, that's gonna be a nice project, it's a reasonable price, and that's good for us all. Um, can I have a motion?
No, you already have.
Oh, a second?
You need a roll call?
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa? Reverend Matthews? Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing Cooper Aries LLP as village auditors in amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, and appointing them as the auditors for the village annual audit for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing payment to General Cole in amount of one thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars for the annual maintenance of village code from appropriation fourteen, ten, four oh three, current account balance at fifteen hundred. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing payment to R and R Pump Control Services for emergency repair to the Thompsonville Pump Station in amount of five thousand, seven hundred for the water department from appropriation G eighty-one, thirty point four twenty-one, current account balance is seven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second? Roll for, call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? And Rochelle?
Yes.
These, these pumps in the village right here, the, the cost of the pumps and the things that we keep paying for, this is one of the reasons why we need to upgrade, cause all we're doing is patching thousands of dollars, and Mr. Snowden can tell you that we get this often about everything's breaking, it's a patch job and it's costing us too much. So that's why we need it. Uh, resolution of the Board of Trustees, allowing the village of Monticello DPW to partner with the town of Thompson Highway Department for the decoration of the corner of Saint John and Broadway for Santa Express on December fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second? Roll call Carmen?
You know, can you show the people, because that's gonna be already a, for-
Yeah, they're gonna have a Santa Claus at the corner there, and they're gonna give out candy and, uh, you know, something for the kids to come. I think we'll, what we'll do is announce it, and I think, did we, did we announce this, we'll put it out?
I have the flyer.
Okay, so we'll do a press release on it.
Yeah, I'm gonna put a flyers outside, because Chris Company donated flyers.
Okay.
And color like that, so.
So we'll do a press release and let people know about it. Uh, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution to go out for bid for the old Lefty's Building on Sturgis Road, starting bid to be, oh, excuse me, yeah. Resolution to go out for bid for vacant lot on Cottage Street, starting bid amount-
Sixteen, babe.
Oh, wait a minute now, I'm getting confused here, uh, excuse, excuse me. Resolution authorizing blanket PO to the town of Thompson for the purchase-
Some money department of the work.
Huh? Oh, okay. Oh, boy, okay. Purchase of salt in amount of seventy-five thousand for two, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, winter season for the highway department from appropriation fifty-one, forty-two, four sixty-eight, current about, current account balance is seventy-five thousand, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
See, that's what happens when you get, start getting old and you don't, you don't wanna get glasses. Resolution to go out to bid for the vacant lot on Cottage Street, starting bid to amount no less than fifteen thousand dollars, can I have a motion?
I make a motion with a question.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, Carmen with a question?
Yeah, um, why this don't went to the county for the, for closes and, uh?
Well, that's, that's village property. It's a village lot.
So the, the, we don't give it those two to them when they go?
Yeah, there's two.
We have a lot of last-
So that's the one, the empty lot and Cottage Street, that's more one? And the other one, where is that? This is in the corner of Clinton and?
No, this, which one? That's on Cottage Street.
No, the lefty one.
Oh, that's the next one?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the next one is on Sturgis Road, uh, eighteen is on Sturgis, that old building on Sturgis on the corner.
In that corner?
Yeah. And the reason why we're doing it ourselves is it belongs to the village, and to give it to the town, they get a cut out of it, so we can just do it ourselves and get the whole amount, so. Alright, well, so on seventeen, is that your question, Carmen?
Yeah.
You just need a roll call?
Okay, roll call, uh, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Rochelle?
Yes.
Okay. And I like to say, you know, uh, past mayors have been giving away our property for a dollar. We want money, that's why we're so broke. We need to start paying to get property, not giving it away from dollars. Look at some of the, uh, minutes and see where a lot of the village property went and how, why it went that way, and you, you'd understand what's going on.
Waverly Avenue was one of the properties that was given for a dollar.
The, uh, the, uh, Cohen's Building, that's, the library's going there, that sold, that's six hundred thousand dollars, and the lot was given away for, I think, three hundred dollars. So now that's why we're so poor in the village. But you know something? We have, me as the mayor, I count, the, the dollar bill is your dollar bill, and I'm not, and I'm making sure it's spent well, so we can re, so we can get moving here in the village. Okay, so, uh, okay, that's number fif, so we'll go to eighteen, that's Sturgis. Resolution to go out to bid for the old Lefty's Building on Sturgis Road, starting bid amount to be no less than fifty thousand, can I have a motion?
Your honor?
Okay.
Make a motion.
I apologize, I was sitting quarter all day. But, um, we, we had a condition on this bid.
That's what you may ask.
Right.
We had a condition.
These, these bids, the, what's, the attorney has to draw up conditions on these bids, because what we want is that when they buy, when they purchase these properties, they can't take them down, they have to immediately build tomorrow.
Yes.
And I have a, I have bidders on this that will build tomorrow as we speak, and put some beautiful buildings up there. These buildings, you know, this is a fine example of saying, this is what gaming has bought. This building has set vacant for years, now everyone and their brother wants to take it. So I'm, I'm glad they didn't give it away for a dollar, otherwise we wouldn't have got this, but that's what's happening in the village. People are wanting to come and pay for stuff that's abandoned, and it's, it's, it only looks brighter for all of us here.
So, uh, I have a, do we have a second?
Did we get a second on, on eighteen?
We, we read it.
Okay.
I don't know, second.
You didn't read it yet.
Oh, okay, resolution, no, I read it, I read it.
Yeah.
A first?
I'll second.
Okay, second, okay, Carmen, with a question.
Yeah, so we're gonna put conditions, why we has to approve it today, we don't know the conditions.
Well, the only condition, the only conditions we're gonna put is you have to build right away on this particular problem.
And it's a residential area?
It's a commercial, yes, yes, a commercial, yes.
But what we, we're just trying to let the board know that these properties will go at least starting fifteen thousand. It, that's a starting, and we, the board has to be informed that, that we're selling properties. I just can't give them away for a dollar. You know what I'm saying?
Is it people's interest in the property or what?
Yes.
And both of them.
Yes.
One of the properties that we got donated, somebody's interested in that as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, uh, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
And Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorize village clerk to write off uncollectible taxes in order to move forward with the village foreclosure beginning December two thousand thirteen, can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Oh, second, we request.
Okay, Carmen with a question?
Due to December thirteen, why we started, because they doing one foreclosure and now November, no?
The county.
No, the process is, um, as of right now, I sent out the foreclosure letters, which were due November first. The next step is to file with the county on December first. So this is the next process, but I have to write off any uncollectible taxes, which is what I gave you all in your packets.
Okay.
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
And Rochelle? You know, we have an employee, uh, that worked for the recreation department for quite a while, and he did a tremendous, Michael, could you come up for a minute, please? Michael Greco? Oh, okay. I'd like to thank you for your service. Michael is resigning and he's going to do something, uh, I think he's trying to, uh, bank on the big, uh-
Something else.
On, yeah, something else, though. I won't disclose it, though. But I mean, he, he, he really worked hard in this village, and he did beyond his job, and far beyond what he was getting paid for. I mean, many, many hours you did in the village, and I, and I really appreciate what you did, because you did put a lot of service into the village. And you, you didn't do, have to do half the thing. It's funny that, uh, some of our department guys have phones, and Mr. Greco, I said, did you turn your keys and your phone in today? And he says, I always use my phone, you know? And I didn't, I, I didn't even know that, though. You know, he used his own personal phone, and I didn't know that, I thought all of it, I thought they had it. But he was, uh, I appreciate what you did.
He gave me the ability to ignore, this is my phone. But, thank you.
But I'd like to, I thank you for what you did, yeah, best of luck with everything.
God will have. We miss you already.
Okay, so we're on the twenty, uh, budget transfers, can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Oh, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? And Rochelle? The Hawkins and Delafield, we already did, so we're at, I think we're done with, uh, addendums, right?
Yes, and I just have one announcement. Uh, there'll be a menorah lighting by Rabbi Konowitz on December first at four PM in front of the Cook Sullivan County Courthouse, and immediately following will be the large menorah lighting in front of the village hall, and that's on December first at four PM.
Okay.
We do that every year, we usually go.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to a public comment, anyone for public? Five minute public comment, please? Oh, was there? Was there?
That's the, uh, engineering, the EPT water agreement.
Oh, is that for your EPT, uh, with, uh, okay, that's, uh, you're gonna do the work for the EPT? Approving the work for EPT, okay.
But we just have to vote it.
That's Barton and Lojudis, that's a separate contract with EPT, and they're gonna do, uh-
We already signed the contract with the county.
But that's a-
That's, oh, that's for them to authorize, okay.
That's for EPT, yes, alright. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second and second.
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? And Rochelle?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, sir? Jesse York?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold the comment?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just state your name and say where you're from, please.
Okay, Jesse York, from, from Monticello. And I'm here to talk about Iban, the boxing club, and we have lost our home. Now, all these kids don't have a place to train, and we looking for a temporary spot for the moment, until we get our own, but right now, we need to keep on moving. Somebody, we got two of them going to the Golden Gloves down in New York in January. All we want is a temporary spot.
And you was saying about the-
Everybody's got the letter?
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
When the ambulance was, the mobile medic was?
Yeah.
That's what you're talking?
I, I would love to have that spot for a minute there, cause we gotta move our equipment around. From where it was, gotta move it out as soon as possible. Or the old firehouse in the back where we was. I know we got a lot of equipment and everything in there, and I know, you know, that, uh, but these kids are more important, I think, than equipment right now. Well, we can put heaters in there.
They have, and, and there is, uh-
With the other ones?
There's, there's files in there that we took, this building here was fi, with files that we have to hold on, and those files have to stay in there. I, I know, um-
I have the, this is the same one you sent?
No, this is a different one. Yeah, this, this is our mission statement.
What the board, what the board, what the board would have to do is discuss it within the board, we'll have to discuss it.
It's between there and, um, the, the old, um, so please, the ambulance place, oh, what's in there?
The, the ambulance corps, uh, records are in there. We took them from the building there and stored them in the ambulance. Cause there's nowhere to put them. No, it's not being heated. Yeah, the heat's cut off, it's high, the heat, the heat bill there is tremendous.
If it's a price-
We'll discuss it.
We'll discuss it.
Okay, yeah, we'll discuss it.
Alright.
Okay.
We use it as a start now, but we can maybe put in someplace else.
We'll discuss it.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
Because it's a sport and, uh, and you have a lot of kids local involved in this sport, so that's, that's a recreation.
Right. And I'd like to be right close where these kids can come from the projects and come on up in there. We're not just teaching them how to box, we're teaching them how to be a man or a woman. It's not only about boxing, it's like a guidance, we're guiding these kids, you know what I'm saying? And they need this in this town, in any town.[1642.12] Well, you know.
Well, Mr. York, that's why, that's why, like you said, I've sat here, I've sat in this village for many years and keep hearing that we need a youth center. I would appreciate it if just the people that are here support me on building that youth center. They're, they're building, they're, they're considering building an eighty million dollar prison, but yet they don't consider building a six hundred thousand recreation center for the kids.
And that's a shame.
And most of those kids that are going to that youth center will probably end up in that eighty million dollar warehouse, and that's a shame.
That's what's gonna happen.
That's a shame.
And that, that pile that's over there that's been sitting there, this is, this is your, your community, call the D E C, call the Department of Labor, and tell them to have it removed already.
Right, right.
And if it's, if it's whatever they're saying what's sitting there, guess what? They don't care.
Right. Voice your concern about that pile there, ask them, why won't they let us? Why, why won't they let us clean it up? All right, that's, um, anyone else for public, sir?
Thank you, Jesse, we'll talk to you, we'll talk to you, the board will discuss it.
Thank you, Jesse.
I'm just drawing my point of view pertaining to my ideas around, I have listened to your inputs on every one of these issues. But I'm seeing where there's a lot of people into this county need place to live. And I'm just referring more than less that if there is any places that the government have that's available to build housing trust there for poor people to live, that they can pay a small amount of income, and have people coming in to build on the county, to make more money, invest in the county. That the light bill can make money, the water rate can make money, the television can make money, just to make a project that people can come in who do not have the amount of sufficient fund to pay a high amount of rental. They can get low-income houses from the lands that the government have to build housing trust house for poor people who can't afford it. I would like you all to look into that, because that is very important, 'cause there's too many people out on the street right now, don't have nowhere to live. Are you with me, everybody? Right or wrong? There are many people here have to go to middle town, down into the city to find a job, right or wrong?
Right.
Are you with me?
I'm with you.
Okay, so therefore, we want to look into it this way, if the government can assist the poor class of people like ourselves, make a housing trust, land that available from the government, that ground, to build houses there that poor people can live, I think that would be a very good help to the county. Because you'll be drawing more money to the county. And business could more improve. Because right now, people is starving, people is hungry, people need everything that can be possible from the government, right or wrong?
I'm starving now.
So therefore, we have to do something towards it. So, I just want to address this, because if there's a, there's many empty land that the government have here, and if they build a housing trust there for the poor class of people, I know it would be helpful to the county. Are you with me, everybody?
Yes.
So if I'm wrong, please look in Twitter, because a lot of people have listened to their view and have seen their needs so terrible that they're just barely making it.
Mr. Sims, you know where I'm at, come to the office, and whatever I can do, you, you talk to me, I'm there, all right?
Okay. Yes, because everybody must have an idea of what's going on here. I'm a bishop, I'm a pastor.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you very much for listening to my conversation.
Thank you, Pastor.
This is easy in comparison to the other two asks. My name is Sandra Oxford, I'm the vice chair of the Sullivan County N double A C P. The N double A C P that I've been a member of is called the Neighborhood Facility Home for fifteen years. We were recently told that we're no longer able to meet there, so I don't know, we had our December meeting scheduled, the first week of December. I'm just wondering what's, what's going on with the schedule, or, you know?
Mr. Greco, can you address that?
What you were told was to make sure that the space would still be available.
Okay.
That was told to the president of the N double A C P, I don't know if you didn't get the exact same memo she got, but I said was that, you know, with me not being there anymore, that they should confirm, and not to show up when they want, but confirm the times they're going to be there with the manager.
So what's the status, basically, of the usage of the community of the neighborhood facility now that we've lost Mr. Greco?
Programs, like I said, any pro, programs that were scheduled there will res, resume, and I'll be there to open the building and close it.
Okay.
There's no changes, the building, there's no changes, the only thing is, is that we're losing Mr. Greco. But I will personally open that building and close it. As far as your program, you won't lose your program, if that's what it is, I don't really.
We meet once a month, we meet, we've met there once a month for fifteen years. Absolutely.
No, no, so, there's nothing changed.
That, that's, okay, good, 'cause we send out our calendar for the full year, everybody was expecting to meet there in December.
No, that's still on, that's still on.
Okay, good.
We're not changing it.
That's not related to that, today, uh, the poor, uh, kids, uh, they went there, but there's nobody opening.
Yeah, because what happened, the only reason why it's locked is that we, we, we lost, he's, he, this is his last day today, so, I, I got his keys, and I, now, I just gotta see what's going on in the building, and I told him I'd start, oh. There's no, there's, this is his first day, and he's out of there, so I just wanna go in there, make sure everything's locked, secured, and then we can go forward on it.
Okay, good.
Let's clear this up, right now. Uh, could you tell me, was anybody scheduled on the calendar, sir? Now, the thing is, the, the Girl Scout group was not, I didn't have her on schedule for today, so I actually locked her.
The Girl Scout group is on Thursday at six P M., and today was scores, they did their stepping there.
Right, and like I said, scores, scores had not actually scheduled. Scores had not actually scheduled the days to be there, they just kind of.
Now, that's fine.
Right, so the idea was, is like I said, on my last day, I didn't want the building open, I locked it up.
Yeah, now, you can do, if anyone has any concerns, just come to the village or call me seven oh one one zero one one. And we'll, we'll, whatever programs or what it is, there, those scheduled programs are gonna be there, I have the key, I'll open it up, and nothing changes. Seven oh one one zero one one. One one, I'll open it, I'll close it, it doesn't, nothing's changed, it's only today that he, that's all it is, there's no changes, call me up.
Can you put a sign in, in case somebody?
Right, that's gonna happen, he just left today, so he left and locked the door, and that's what happened, just today, 'cause he's done.
Yes, put the number there, that way they can call you in case.
All right, that's, okay, I'll take care of that, that issue there, um, sir? Sir?
How can we structure a way that we can fill storefronts in this community? They have more empty lots more than you have.
You need the interest.
Business with money, you have to have money to come in and, and do anything.
Now, there's many opportunities, if you, you have to look at the government system, there's many opportunities for people to come and business.
I've tried, I've looked all over, if you have an idea to bring money in for business, come and talk to me, I'm dying to put people in there, I'm open, I put in grants, we did a, we did a grant for the whole downtown, uh, Broadway.
Yeah, but you need, uh, you spend the money, but you need to have people that come to the community.
Well, that's what you guys.
We don't spend money, they stay for fifty million dollar, now, the, as owners and Broadway, they give a free rent for a year. So maybe you should contact here, and we put a, you know, in communication with the owners, I mean, you don't pay no rent for the whole year, but you has to talk that on private, we can't tell it what to do, they have a private owners.
But you need industry here more than housing.
That's what, right, we'll look, we have great.
Without issue, this, this county is gonna be in a lot of.
We have grants out there and a lot of things that we, we're waiting on answers.
Do you have website to post it, that people can be more aware of things?
I, we have a website, but.
You should put this on the website, have more opportunities.
Well, I'm probably a twenty-four hour direct line, you call me, just like, I, oh, I'm kinda redundant when I'm, keep saying, but I'm there, I'm here at village hall every day you call.
Because the people don't know these things, just 'cause come to a board, the website draws thousands and thousands of people.
No, it was a meeting with the owners few times in the chamber of commerce, and they were so, and it was a me, it was in a paper, it was in the news, everything. You know, some people show up, some people don't, but if you want, interest in any building for a business, yes, contact here, and, and, you know, the mayor is here, so he will give you the number.
As people in the village, like as a board, a mayor, and like everybody here, you should encourage more people from different areas that you can opposite of what retail, middle town hasn't bring you to this.
I'll make a short statement to you, I went to, I went to China to bring people in this county, and you know something? That's, I didn't just sit there, and these developers are coming to this county, so.
China would not come to this market here.
Did you go to Woodridge, did you go to Ri, Woodridge, where do you think those people came from? No, you don't know, come and talk to me.
We have a sports, a sports bar going up, aren't we?
Oh, yeah, you know what, there's a sports bar going up at the old, uh.
Asians that bought it.
Right.
Yeah, but, you know, everybody could talk, you have to do it. Where, where, different things.
That's common, that's the old, uh, you know, the buffet that the downtown buffet? There's a, right, then, down here, there's a, they're opening up a sports bar, the old. All right. Let me, okay.
And I have a question, I would help you with a, a, a sports complex.
Hey, come on, call me up, or stop by.
But you see, but.
You have to have money, sir, too, at the same time, you need to have money.
Well, if you have money.
If you wanna do a sport.
I like helping people.
Me too.
But, 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 the other aspect, now, what about this building that I see that you demolished, it's hard now?
Let me, you, we, I have someone, let's go, yeah, we, I can't, I don't, I'm just, I don't wanna go back and forth, but we'll go. Sir, Charlie?
Regarding Iban, Iban, time is of the essence for Iban, we need to find a home for them. Unfortunately, they got in the middle of a situation which, which had nothing to do with them, it had to do with two other people, Jesse knows what I'm talking about, okay? This is our youth, our youth is our greatest natural resource. We need to take care of these young people, 'cause Iban is such a positive force for them, I've seen what he's done, 'cause I was there, and we need, we can't sleep on it, we definitely can't sleep on it. Time is of the essence, that's it.
I agree, I agree.
We never say no, right away, I wanted to make it clear that nobody in this board say no to Jesse, we as a board, we need to look at the building, and we need to sit down with him and talk about it. But we never say no.
I would like to say something, please call the Department of Labor and the D E C, so we can get this trash, so we can start this youth center.
Move Mount Jenkins. Yes, okay, ma'am?
I just wanted to say that, um, the board of Iban is a board of volunteers, we're not looking for the money, we wanna invest in choice. We're not looking for any money, but we do need a home, and the ambulance place is connected to the center in which you are in need of someone to, to care this, watch it. If you allow us to have that space, we'll put in all of the work that everyone needs to keep it alive and keep it running. Because, you know, you got the seniors, you got the children, you got everybody who needs to use that facility, and is part of your community, and it is very necessary to have a location that's, you know, everyone can be able to get to, it's known, you know, it's central, you know, and it's a great asset to the community. To invest in your children, your seniors, and everything, so we are group of volunteers, we are not looking for money.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else for public?
I just have a question, everybody in here talking about anything, but when is the last time somebody's been into Monticello Public Schools and see what's going on with our kids for real?
Thank you, yeah.
Now, everybody in here talking about this thing and that thing, I'm sorry, I don't have any babies, but I do have four grandchildren, and oldest one is eighteen now, there's a. But there's a lot of bullying going in in the village school, there's a lot of kids, a kid next door to me got his head slammed repeatedly in the locker, where he has blood on his brain right now.
Wow.
So can somebody in here please step up to the school board, stop worrying about all this stuff, because without our kids, we're not gonna have nothing, 'cause it's none of us gonna live forever. This whole board is gonna be replaced by a new generation. So I think that everybody in here need to start dealing with the real problem we have in the village, and that's our children.
Very, that's right.
And somebody needs to go into the school immediately, somebody with authority, 'cause they not gonna let me go in there, I have another baby, so I can't go in there and talk and rap and rant. But don't worry, I will go.
You can still go to the meeting, you can still run to the school board, and we can still get behind you.
So right now, this bullying thing that's going on in the Monticello School District needs to stop, because we've been hearing on the news how these kids are blowing up other schools and shooting their parents and everything. Don't think that our students are not paying attention to that, I don't think I want it to happen in Monticello. They had a bomb scare yesterday, so maybe if somebody of authority, I'm looking at the board here, can somebody please pay attention to the Monticello School District? 'Cause we losing our kids, they're, they are not children, those ten years old are eighteen years old.
We also have the representative for N double A C P, so maybe.
Yesterday, having a bomb scare in the school.
We had wonderful forum on law enforcement last week with the N double A C P, we had some young people, Diana's son was there, we had a wonderful turnout, we had people from the community, and we need to form better relationships with the law enforcement, and we have to be involved in all the forums, but this is not that forum.
This is, yeah, but guess what, do you have children in the school district?
Listen, I survived that whole experience, and I know that's one of the greatest fights, and everybody was appearing, needs to be in their fight, because I fought to.
That will pull a gun out on you here in Monticello.
I also voice on that also, you know, what really happened is that you need more security into the school.
Okay.
That's for sure, because many things is going on with the, they need discipline, and they also need protection.
Okay, we have to, okay, anyone else for public comment, um?
And we give the board and the mayor an applause for everything they're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that's thank, that's really nice of you to do that, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? No one for public comment, okay, we're gonna, we don't have to go in executive session, right?
No.
Okay, all right, can I have a make a motion to, hm? Yeah, can I have a make, uh, motion to close the meeting?
Oh, you wanna discuss?
But it's, uh, be better to read it now.
Maybe we'll read it, because we just got it. All right, can I have a motion to close the meeting? Second? Okay, roll call Carmen? Larissa? Reverend Matthews? And Rochelle? I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the meeting, your support is greatly appreciated in this village. Without the support, we will get nowhere in this village, please, I really appreciate everyone showing up, thank you.